I'm sorry.
Hey, you will work Friday good stuff. Thanks. Just you.
I was laying on the floor thinking, you guys lived good life. I've known it so bad in my life.
I mean, that fires in a family.
You know, Jen, if you're right, well, other than your favorite sport, you haven't been got it because you said the weather's changed. You walk out. You remember somebody, right? I don't think it was that started. And I think it hangs around. If I'm probably carrying it or anything, my kids, we had to stay on. So this year, at least two days, I say, one day or so. Yeah, we get some after they. Yeah. But yeah, like I said, I'm sure with good eyes, definitely because of the COVID and Jasper pretty much. We are totally. It's 100%. I will not change everything that Eric can. Most of the people celebrate terrible. Bring it up twice over. You know, I'll be like, show us. That's what I'm saying. That's what you have to point. And you know, I'll see. There was, yeah, for a small town. So. Selfie. Yeah.
Second.
Before we get started, I just wanted to recognize an individual that's here tonight with us. And Jeff Raider, Jeff is with Exos and Exos is our new IT partner. And so Jeff, welcome. Glad to have you as a partner in the city of Jasper. Thanks for attending.
Thank you, sir. We are excited as well.
He's been working very closely with the teams, scoping out all the opportunities and responding to it. Okay, everybody's ready?
Yeah.
Council, City of Jasper, please our roll call.
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Bonderhead.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Lincoln.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Telman.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Morai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Everly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Moody.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Faver.
Here.
Our Treasurer Kirsten Kennedy is present. In order to have a forum, the majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a forum for this meeting.
Thank you. Would you take a moment for personal reflection? Dear and all that are able, please stand and join for pleasure.
I am a citizen of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands on a nation of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes were sent out. Any additions or gracious events? The product entertainer portion.
I'll make a motion to bring the minutes as presented.
I'll push Kevin's here. Same events. Any further discussion? In favor of saying aye. First thing on the agenda tonight is the Heart of Jasper, the Chamber of Commerce update. I don't know. I'm just gonna go here.
It's the engine first. I'll go first and get out of the way.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me. Kate Schwenk with Heart of Jasper. I'm just here to give some updates from 2024 and then I'll share a few projects and things that we're working on for 2025. So first off, just want to again thank the city on behalf of myself and the board for the financial support. With Josh Gonsalves helps out a lot. Other staff helps out a lot and Street Department, Lieutenant Department, they all support us and it everyone makes a difference in getting our work done. So just thank you to everyone within the city. We have four subcommittees all focused on a different mission within Heart of Jasper. So I'm just gonna go through the four subcommittees on some of our projects and just share some highlights from the year. So within our Economic Vitality Committee, we oversee the facade grant program. So in 2024, we completed four facade projects. We installed 10 new signs. That was something we added this year in 2024 was to encourage new signage on the buildings. So totaling over $98,000 in building improvements. Round five of the facade grant program is open for 2025 and it closes next week. So it's already the fifth round of the facade program, which is kind of hard to believe. Since 2021, 23 facades have been approved using the facade grant dollars, and that's not including the buildings that completed work on their own without using facade grant funds. We started the new business incentive. This started in 2020 through the Genesis 12 project and 2024. We had seven businesses open in the Heart of Jasper and five businesses relocated in. And two of those businesses received new business incentive money for a total of $23,000. And so today, the Genesis 12 donor has given over $340,000 to 27 businesses in the Heart of Jasper. And we'll continue with the new business incentive in 2025. They've committed to $50,000 going forward. So we're looking to enhance that a little bit, add some other incentives to that versus just only financial incentive. So we're excited about that. And then we do host a tour of open house or an open house of vacant spaces. So one of our focuses is filling the vacant spaces with arts, entertainment and dining type businesses. So as of today, we have 10 spaces available for rent. And so we put those on social media and different projects that we have to highlight those, but we do one specific open house event throughout the year in partnership with DuBois County Entrepreneurs and Innovators. Under our design committee, this committee focuses on the aesthetics and the beautification of downtown. We did activate the second Astro Alley with some art installation, holly balls and lights. And so we have the three alleys activated, the historic alley by Sterns. We will leave that one untouched. And then is what we're working on in 2025 for the piano alley. We have a group of IU students from the Luddy School. And they are designing sensors. And so as you would walk through the piano alley, music will play. So it'll have a different interactive element than just art. It'll have the sound and music piece to tie in with the with the piano valley. We host Love Your Community Cleanup Days at least twice a year. And so we partner with Jasper Park and Rec to help maintain the downtown through pulling weeds, cutting back the flowers and planting flowers in the spring. We get volunteers from Turner American Bank, from Kimball Electronics and other Heart of Jasper members. And what Green Thumb said, they would have paid six full time employees for at least eight hours. We can get done in about two and a half hours and with all volunteer labor, which is it's a lot of cost there. And they pay $50 an hour. So in case you need to, you know, we'll get your job change there. We joined Avenue of Flags in 2024. We partnered with the merchants on this. We have 16 flags from Central Green through Cavi Chamber Office and then around the square. And we'll do that again in 2025 and hopefully as Main Street project is done, we can have flags go up and down Main Street too, if it the location works out. And for 2025, we're working on a light up downtown Jasper project. So there's permanent lighting on the buildings on the square currently. All installed by the building owners. And one thing we're looking at is getting a quote to see if Heart of Jasper can install lighting that's consistent. So it all matches. And a bit more of a permanent attachment and then syncing them with the courthouse lights. So as the courthouse lights would change colors for all holidays, then all the perimeter lighting on the buildings on the square would also change color. So we're waiting on a quote on that, but that is something that we would love to do in 2025. And then we have a promotion committee and this is the one that oversees our events downtown. So another area of focus is downtown activation. So the courthouse square being done and having the the four corners, we're really trying to activate those and focusing more on consistent events. So movies on Main, those are free movies at the Astra. We do those in the winter months. Music on Main is something we started last year and will continue again in 2025. So we have 22 Saturdays where there'll be live music on the square from 11 to 1:00. And so just something that's entertainment going on when people are downtown shopping and eating. And then downtown Chowdown is back. And so that'll be at the Riverwalk Plaza. And one thing we're adding to this year is a bounce house every month. And really try to focus on kids for that event. So the park already has the ping pong tables and the cornhole board installed. So the the location works throughout great. I'll just can have a bounce house along with the live music and the food trucks each month. And then the shop and sip is our monthly late night shopping event. That's the third Wednesday of the month. There'll be eight of those in 2025. And live music there, the stores, they open late. Some of the stores will do special events in their stores during that event. So we'll continue with that in 2025. And then our Me and One Day is our annual fundraiser that we host in April. In 2024, we sold out at 275 tickets and brought in $10,000 for that event. And so we'll continue doing that Me and One Day type fundraiser each October. And then our organization committee, this is more of the one that looks at our budget and our volunteers. And so we host a community appreciation event. We did this at the next chapter a few weeks ago, really thanking our volunteers, our board and anyone that's a supporter of Heart of Jasper. We started off 2025 getting announced that we are nationally recognized or national accredited through the Main Street program, which is the highest level of accreditation a Main Street program can be by reaching certain levels that are access to the Main Street. And we were supposed to have a transformation strategy workshop this week to realign on our goals and do a strategic planning process, but with the weather, we had to reschedule. So that was, we were looking forward to that and seeing what the community feedback would have given the last five years. We've been focused on arts, entertainment and dining, and that was all driven from the strategic planning five years ago. So it'll be interesting to see from the focus groups and the survey if that still needs to be our focus or if if that will change. So I know that was a quick update. The handout I gave you is our annual report. That's also on our website. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them or go ahead and call me and we can talk more in detail about anything. So and appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Again, good job leading this organization, Kate. Main Street Organization, the City of Jasper, five years ago, we started it. So it's been a real asset for us activating the downtown. And Kate did it on a part-time basis.
Lot of help. Help from the other people. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Nancy.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Every year, the City of Jasper, through the budgeting process, gives the chamber $4,000 and also sponsors a table at our annual meeting. So part of that contract that we have with the city is a reporting back to tell you about what the chamber does. So I kind of outlined something here. Our planning goals, there's a whole lot of things on this list. I'm just going to highlight some of them. But what we're wanting to do this year is really create the fear of missing out or FOMO. So we have so much to offer through the chamber that we want everyone to be a part of this organization and all that we stand for and all that we work toward. So some of the things that we were doing during the year of 2025, we're going to be refreshing our new Welcome to Jasper book. And revising it, adding some new photos and updating our chamber members that are listed in there and also updating the information. We're also going to be focusing on the Dubai's County Small Business Resource Center, and I'm going to go into that a little bit later. That's one of your handouts there. And we do a weekly newsletter to our members. We feel the importance of staying connected and keeping our members informed. And we really learned this a lot during COVID. I've said this before, but during COVID, I know some other chambers were like, oh, man, we're going home. We're shutting the doors. Well, we never shut our doors one day. We felt very felt like it was very important to stay connected and keep our members informed. We also, we have a job opportunities, an email that's sent out about twice a month with local job opportunities that are available through many of our companies and we offer that as a free service. This year, we're going to be introducing what we call a mystery shopper program to our members. So for example, let's say, Paul, in your business, you might have one of our volunteers come into your business and we would have a form that they would fill out, kind of critiquing the business. What does the outside look like? What does the inside look like? How was the customer service and those kinds of things? When our volunteers return that to the chamber, we would not, we don't have anything more to do with it. We stick it in an envelope and we give it back to you. And you can decide then if you want to make those changes or not. So we're just starting to promote that among our members and feel like it will be very well received. All of the businesses really could probably use a little bit of, you know, critiquing, I guess you might say. Also, we do a lot of ribbon cuttings. As you know, you all get notifications on the ribbon cuttings and we have two scheduled already for this year and we already did one. So as you, things are moving rapidly with that. We also help sponsor through some chambers in the southwestern Indiana area, a regional women's conference. And this will be the fifth time we've done this as a combined partnership and that'll be on Friday, October 24th. Then we also through the chamber, we help coordinate the Otona Days in Jasper, which is a big Christmas celebration and do it kind of on behalf of the merchants in the downtown area, but really for the whole city. And then also every year we do a how to start a business seminar, and we also work very closely with the Indiana Small Business Development Center on succession planning and every other thing that they offer throughout the year. And then we host the coffee with the mayor and that's being held four times during 2025 and we'll be scheduling the first one for sometime in the early part of March. And then we also hold legislative breakfast and we do these, some chambers call them third house sessions. We invite our state legislators to come speak to the constituents, whoever shows up. And really, we did one in January. There were so many questions. We couldn't even get through all the questions. So the next one will be held sometime in March and it'll be about halfway through the session or a little bit more than halfway through the session. So it should be very well attended. And then we do what we call timeout from business. It's a networking opportunities for businesses in the area to get together, connect, network and and really showcase the member business that is hosting that event. We also, we do the planning for the Old Jasper Day on May the 18th and work with the Lions Club for their strawberry festival and then promote that as a small community event. Women Empowering Women is a separate group. It's another membership organization, but it is designed for women in the working world. And we do four sessions of that throughout the year, really as a networking and also an information and educational session. And then for our annual meeting or maybe another large event, depending on how we can get the speaker scheduled, we're looking at maybe bringing in Doug Bowles. He's the director of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Some of you may have heard him speak before. He's a very good speaker and also something that we feel like local people would be interested in, especially with all the changes that have gone on that at that facility through the past probably five years. We are working, we work with some other groups, DuBoy Strong and some others on the Entrepreneurs and Innovators Group. And that's to help people wanting to start a business and stay connected and help them through that process. And then I also serve on the board of the Crane Regional Defense Group. I feel like that's very important. And just today I was named for another two year term on that board. It's a great way for our community to stay connected with Crane and everything and all the changes that are going on up in that area and in the Westgate Center also. We're doing something a little bit different. We did some interviews yesterday. Lisa is on our board also. She represents the Heart of Jasper on our board. So we're interviewing some of our board members and we'll be putting those out on Facebook and social media. So you can look for Lisa's interview to come out maybe in a couple of weeks. We promised we didn't make her laugh or anything during that interview. And then Patoka 2000 is another group that's been around for a long time. We take care of putting the flags and the plant, the flags and the planters on the bridge. We also do a tree dedication, a blessing of a tree every year on Arbor Day. And it's just really a small group of people that do a lot of volunteer work and we keep the area down by the bridge, kind of cleaned up and spruced up also. We do paper shredding. We've combined our efforts with the Kimball Resource Center now, and those guys, they are just crazy with the paper shredding. They do a whole lot more than what we've ever done in the past, but we combine with them. We help promote it. And they take in a lot of paper shredding, which would then keep that stuff out of the trash. We also have our annual meeting every fall and we're looking forward to 2026 because that is the 250th anniversary of the United States. And the Dubai's County Historical Society is taking the lead on that. So Gary Ak is forming a committee to help do whatever efforts that we're gonna bring forth on that. We have a lot of partners with the chamber. We partner with the Row Jack, Strauss and Fest, Memorial Hospital, Heart of Jasper, DuBoy Strong, just a whole lot of partners. And I have many of them listed at the bottom of the page. But I did want to focus a little bit on the Dubai's County Small Business Resource Center. This is something, these services, the chamber's been providing for many years, really. But the intention of it is to focus on small business and entrepreneurial development and to foster true entrepreneurial spirit in our community, mostly working with companies that would have 100 employees or less. Usually when it's more than that, DuBoy Strong will take care of those type of businesses, either recruiting or helping keep those type of businesses in business. But the the important thing of this is to work with potential new businesses, existing struggling businesses, and then attract targeted businesses that could have success in this region. So we have our office, which we get a lot of people that walk in and say, I want to start a business. How can you help us do that? We also work with the Small Business Development Center. We're looking for some volunteer mentors and also some professional services, for example, any attorneys, accountants, maybe marketing people that would be willing to give maybe up to 10 hours of kind of free or reduced rates that could help someone get started in their business without having to put out huge amounts of money to do that. And then maybe they would become a client of that particular professional service. Maybe working with some landlords for some affordable or reduced rate of office space or business space. And then continuing to what we do well, provide workshops, seminars. We have a lot of free materials. We provide networking opportunities. And then after someone's gone through all of that, we love to cut the ribbon and make sure that they're going to be in business for many years to come in a successful way. Because as the mayor knows and some of you others. Cause as as the mayor knows and some of you others, we cut a lot of ribbons. And sometimes we feel they haven't gone through that process and you just wonder sometimes how long they'll stay in business. But for the most part, they do well in our community and we want them to even do better. Um, but anyway, so starting a business is hard work and it takes much determined dedication. And we wanna provide as much help we as we can to make sure that they'll succeed for many years to come. So that's my um presentation tonight, anyone have any questions?
Answer this one, I do think you brought a lot of excellent resources to business startups and those existing businesses that are thinking about down the road. Now, what's their handle, what's their retirement plan, how they gonna. Keep their business alive and thrive in the future.
Right.
Appreciate you, all those times you bring them to.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda. It's an update Jenny. This is on the help program, if you remember, this is a. Help grant that we applied with the county to get it. receive it, and Jenny is managing.
Good evening, Jenny Moniz, Indiana Fifteen Regional Planning Commission. One year ago, your February meeting, I stood before you and talked about the help program. That the county and the city had partnered on and. A year later, we, I'm here today to give you some updates and this program has been very well received. In the year that since we started this, I've sent out for three hundred applications for this program. I still get a call, an email, someone reaching out almost every week, hoping that there's still funding available. Um, today, we've received over ninety applications, we actually stopped after some consultation with. Mayor and with the county, we stopped sending out new applications in April. Applications started going out February twenty eighth, and so from February until April, we sent out applications. Uh, and had already received more applications back by April than we would have had funding available. And just to see how well received this was, applications, like I said, went out, the first ones went out February twenty eighth. We had someone at our door at Indiana Fifteen at seven o'clock on the twenty ninth with an application completed, ready to go. He had stayed up all night, gotten everything ready, wanted to make sure that he had everything in so that he could be involved in the program. The program has taken a little longer to get going than we anticipated, however, it is just working through uh some new hurdles. Okra, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, has taken over this program from the Housing Community Development Authority. So they were just learning the program and so we were learning it along with them. But we have bid out several homes, we have homes that have new roofs at this time. Uh, we had some that actually got new roofs in December when weather was still really great, we have some that are waiting on weather to break. Uh, and to get roofs on those again, we have some homes that have received new HVAC systems, water heaters. We have a resident who did without hot water for several months waiting, she told me, she said. I grew up without hot water, I can wait a little longer till this comes in, so she was very, very patient. Um, she said, she was very pleased though when she finally did get hot water back at her house and she could take a comfortable shower again. We have our next set of homes out for bid, information was sent out for those today, actually on roof work. A lot of the homes throughout the county need roofs. And it is a big expense that homeowners struggle with paying, and it's something that just kind of gets put on the back burner. I haven't time again, uh we have twelve homes out now for bid. We'll open those bids in January, work can be done then as soon as contractors feel they have time and the weather is great, so. Hoping for a warmer spring. Uh, then we'll have another twelve homes ready to go as soon as those bids are open and contracts are assigned again. Uh, we are bidding this in stages and I've worked with homeowners on their priorities of what they would like completed in their home. Since they've had a home inspection and a rate on inspection, we do have some homes that will be receiving some rate on mitigation through this program. The rate on levels in their home were indicated to be higher than the allowable uh percentages. And so the mitigation will occur, that will also come out of cram funds as well. The only hiccup that we have hit through this entire program is. We need some contractors for electrical work and general uh general contractors to do some ADA accessibility. So if in your talks with any uh local contractors, the bidding process is not hard. Uh, there are a couple forums that have to be filled out, there is a bid bond that is required uh to be turned in, but the bidding process is not hard. I would be very glad to walk anybody through the bidding process if they're interested at all. Uh, they can contact me and I will be happy to to work with them on that, but we do have some homes that are needing some electrical work. But have yet to have been submitted for those homes, uh that's our only hiccup that we face thus far in the Okra Occupy Program. This program was a twofold program, the other part of the funding is going to try try a tricap head start. Um, Head Start is so excited to receive funding, they are able to purchase some things for a new sensory room. At the facility here in Jasper, I'm working on getting some things from other places throughout the building as well, through their office. So that it can, they can continue their mission. They are also looking to hire a new employee. But like everybody else that's looking to hire, there are, there's a lot of folks looking to fill that. And the other uh, the flip side of that as well as that Molly Woodder has noted. This contract only goes until the end of the year, so that person would only be employed through guaranteed employment through the end of the year, so that is. It's kind of a a hindrance to some folks if they aren't looking. But otherwise, the program is going well, we are excited for spring to get things moving. On homes and to see this program complete, it will be completed by the end of the year, all work will be completed. And we can have a lot of very happy homeowners. Any questions?
Jenny, is there enough money to fill the request of the ninety applications?
We have, um, we have a lot of fifteen thousand per home, but there, most of the homes we are getting the work done are well under that. So we've, we've gone through, we've inspected our initial forty homes, they've had a home and a complete home inspection, had a rate on inspection. Once we've gone through and taken care of the work on those, if we need to start pulling in some more of the applicants that have received it, we've received your application, you are qualified. We need to hold until there's funding, we can go to those folks then. And I, I really wanna thank the homeowners who have been patient through this process, uh I know a lot of them have held off on. Having heat, having hot water, as I noted, uh we've had roofs that are leaky. But they have been very patient and just excited to be able to participate in this program and to be able to stay in their homes. And you have been a model for other communities, the O R program has opened up statewide. For any community that is interested. Uh, the city of Tell City was granted an application back in December, and so they've looked at. DuBois County, the city of Jasper's program, and have modeled a little bit of theirs after, and there's also other communities taking note. And this program will be taking off throughout our area, we we already have, uh, I think I have four communities. Who are ready to submit an application whenever they're able. Yes, sir.
Oh, you mentioned uh having problems getting up like.
Yes.
I just pulled up our new uh Builders Association website, there's maybe six or seven companies listed.
I will, I will reach out to them, yeah.
And sustainability, where do you see?
I can see that this program is going to be something that communities, like I've noted, have have started applying for. Uh, if DuBois County or the city of Jasper wish, they can apply for this again in the future. The matching requirement is much less than what it was for the help program. The help program, you were required to match it with a million dollars and you received a million dollars. The match for the now, for the program now is a ten, ten percent minimum match. Counties can receive up to five hundred thousand dollars in funding, cities and towns can receive three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding. So the requirement is is much less than than what you were required to put forth with help. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda is, we have a list of these. Resolution with regard to Senate Bill One, before we go into that discussion. Like to introduce Matt Gerler and Clint Lamb with AIM, and they're here to just kind of inform us. They represent. Indiana municipalities, Accelerating Indian municipalities, and they've been really in the middle of all this discussion at the State House. With others, other municipalities, we invited them to come down and just kind of share what they're saying. What's what?
Sure. Well, uh, thank you very much for allowing the AIM traveling salvation show to come through your community. Uh, before we start on that, I, I do wanna give my sincere heartfelt appreciation for your mayor, he does an outstanding job, serves on our board of directors. Um, I am a recovering public official, one year sober from the mayor's office in the city of Sullivan. Uh, where I served for three terms in the city of Sullivan, so I'm working for several year mayors here. And January first of last year, when I decided not to seek a fourth term, um, talked with Mr. Gerler and I got on board and and started the field services program with a cohort. Uh, Mayor Joe from Warsaw, Indiana, up north, and me being from Sullivan, I kinda unofficially take, take the south. Having said that, I travel, I travel to each community, I travel to all the counties. I visit with the mayors, the court treasurers, which you have an outstanding court treasurer as well. She's a very informative, she's always asking a lot of questions, she, she represents you very well. Uh, here, and I gotta give a shout to Lisa, she does an amazing job too, uh for your city. But uh, just wanna let you know sincerely that we're all in the same boat, right? With AIM, all of our municipalities, we're facing the same challenges, we're facing the same issues. But what sets you apart here in Jasper is you have amazing quality of services. You have dedicated uh political officials and you truly are um. The admiration of a lot of southern Indiana, especially Hoosier community, so I mean that sincerely and I. You you know, sometimes in public office, you'd always hear all the good things, right? Going on in your community, but I wanna tell you, of all the communities I've, I I go to, everybody wants to be like Jasper. So uh, thank you for serving on the council and the positions that you do and making Jasper uh an outstanding community. And which kind of leads into our discussion tonight, obviously what it takes to be cut, to be an outstanding community, right? Uh, there's always a new project, I've been to see Mayor Dean, I bug him, I've probably been here two or three different times this year. There's always something new, there's always something exciting and uh things don't stay stale here in the city of Jasper. Uh, your, your police department is a high level, your fire department, when you compare it statistically with with other communities. Uh, with with your, your uh regional wellness and your aquatics and and uh the library and the arts, it's just. It's amazing, I can stand here and brag on you all night long, but I'm not here to do that, you know how, what a great community you have, but. But like I said, it leads us, I'm here with Matt Gerler tonight, our executive director. And our job at AIM, and I I know several of you, cause I've seen you at different AIM events, so I don't have to go over exactly what Accelerating Indiana municipalities do. Other than me traveling to your communities, we also do provide a lot of education and we advocate and we lobby on your behalf nonstop. Uh, at the State House, uh year round, obviously, it's been a uh spirited legislative session. Uh, this year, and we understand you have a resolution here this evening that you guys are are considering. And uh, we just kind of wanted to provide you a little bit of an update from our end and on your behalf, being your advocate of kind of what's going on in the state house.
Hi, everybody. One's never met a microphone, he doesn't want. Uh, a pleasure to be here, I thought what I do is. Very quickly, at a very high level, take you through where things stand currently as it relates to property taxes and and the Indiana General Assembly. Obviously, we'd all like to see lower property taxes, you all know though that property taxes account for a good uh majority of your general fund budget. Uh, vital services are paid for with property taxes, I don't have to tell you all that, you know how important it is. Uh, but as it stands today, you've heard a lot probably about Senate Bill One. That is the vehicle or the bill that is moving that addresses the property taxes, uh it is a high priority bill, as you might imagine. Uh, it started out with the governor's proposal, I won't go into all those details just other than to say that. The fiscal impact of that bill had it passed uh in its current form or in its introduced form. Would have been dramatic for cities and towns statewide, uh we were talking close to a two billion dollar. Uh, reduction in property tax revenue around the state, uh upwards of twenty, thirty percent in a lot of communities from their existing property tax levels. So it's a very serious discussion, uh that bill has gone under a pretty transformational change in the senate and it's headed over to the house now. Uh, as it stands today, Senate Bill One, the, the key components are as follows, the municipal municipal growth quotient, the MLGQ. The amount your levy can increase every year, that number that's set by the state for the last couple of years, it's been fixed at four percent. Uh, this bill proposes a cap or a zero uh percent increase for twenty twenty six, a one percent increase for twenty twenty seven. And a two percent increase for twenty twenty eight, uh so it has a compounding effect. Uh, as you go forward over the next three years, that money that you otherwise would have received in your normal distributions is gone. Uh, so that would never be able to be recouped, I haven't looked at your exact numbers yet, but I suspect for a a city the size of Jasper. The number is significant and and important, excuse me, important. Uh, it also provides for some specialized deductions, targeted deductions for senior citizens, fixed income folks and veterans. Uh, we have not raised any objections to those elements of the bill, uh we think that's, that's fine, it's, it's in the normal course of business that the legislature will do. Uh, and look to help those folks that that need it uh around the state. The other big piece is, has, have you ever appealed, uh done an excess levy appeal here in the city of Jasper?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what that is, the treasurer definitely knows what that is, that process is eliminated, it goes away in Senate Bill One. Uh, so it would be very difficult for you to capture growth in your community, new investment, new assessed valuation. Uh, there's a new process being put in place, I'm sure you're all familiar with. The referenda process that schools use, uh that would now apply to cities and towns in the state of Indiana. So you would be allowed a one-year uh bump in your levy if it passes a referenda. And then you would have to go back and do it all over again, so it's only there for one year, it's a very, very different process. One that doesn't make a lot of sense if you're looking to bump your, your levy amount for, you know, new police or fire, anything along those lines. It's a very difficult management process, so we'll be working on that the second half. So that's where the bill stands today, uh it is out of the senate now, next week, the legislature takes a week off. They'll switch houses, so all the senate bills will come over to the house and it'll be in the Ways and Means Committee. Um, you've also probably heard a lot about House Bill fourteen oh two perhaps, I hope you've read in our materials. That bill did not pass out of the house in the first half, but uh the concepts contained in the bill remain very alive. So things that are in that bill include really turning the property tax system upside down on its head. And going to more of a rate-based system, I won't get into that tonight, it's pretty complex, but it would change things dramatically. Uh, there would be winners and losers, losers all over the state in terms of revenue increases and decreases depending on where you fall. More importantly, I think in the bill is something called business personal property tax. Uh, so this bill looks at eliminating the thirty percent depreciation floor for business personal property tax. What does that mean? If you own a business, you have a significant investment in equipment, that equipment never fully depreciates. It stops that thirty percent floor, you're paying property taxes on thirty percent of its value for the useful life of the the piece of equipment. That goes away, okay, we're not here to debate whether that's good or bad, but we know that that provides a significant source of revenue back to cities and towns. So that would need to be replaced. The replacement mechanism that the house has been debating is a local income tax lit. Uh, similar to what you probably have in the county today, except that you as the city council would have to make an affirmative vote. To break away from that system and do your own lit rate within the city of Jasper. Uh, we can get into the details of that more, uh once we get further into the process, but. Couple with these deductions and these reduced revenues that that we're looking at in the property tax space. Without passing a new lit at the local level, it'd be very difficult, I would imagine, for you to maintain your same level of service that you have today in Jasper. Just a a number, dollars and cents uh analysis of of where things stand today. So like I said, we're at the halfway point, so we are now uh really encouraging. Uh, cities and towns all across the state to adopt resolutions, I understand you have one prepared for tonight. Uh, resolutions are resolutions, I think we all know that. Uh, but the importance here is that hopefully it will generate local conversation and awareness around property taxes. And what they're used for locally here in the city of Jasper, uh help to generate some earned media of your folks here in the, in the region. To begin talking about that and yes, we, again, we all wanna pay lower taxes on our homes, uh but we also wanna make sure. Yes, we, again, we all want to pay lower taxes on our homes, uh, but we also want to make sure that our streets are plowed. Uh, the police and fire folks show up when they, when they need to show up and all those good things, so. Thank you for taking that under consideration tonight, would really, uh, appreciate you moving in that direction. Uh, we hope to have a couple hundred of cities and towns in the next few weeks adopt these around the state, so you certainly won't be alone. Um, and you're already behind Ferdinand Pass one, it's just the other night, so you can't let those guys get out in front of you too far. Um, but no, all kidding aside, happy to answer any questions and, uh, appreciate the time and consideration.
Thanks, Matt, uh, one of, one of the comments that was made last week and. So around team, I'm thinking of us, uh, was that so many times we look at the cost and the tax, that's, that's the way we look at it. That's such a high cost, we don't look at the value to get returned. And so it's the value of the services that I think we're trying to highlight here. What the impact it might be on certain specific production would take place.
Matt, are there any amendments being discussed on that or?
Yeah, we have a long way to go, there'll be some intense debate in the second half of session. Um, the, the bill in its current form will be heard in Ways and Means the first week of March. Uh, we'll probably wait another week or, or two after that, that's where all the amended amendments and changes will happen in the process. And so we'll probably come back to you with a, a different update of whatever the, the new version looks like. Um, I think you all know the governor's pushing hard for property tax relief to homeowners. Um, legislature, depending on which legislator you talk to, uh, is fully in favor to. You know, you have to watch out on the backside of what implications this has for local government, et cetera, so. Trying to educate as best we can and let folks know that you all haven't been, uh. Immune from inflationary increases, whether it's salary or the cost of asphalt or. Cost of road salt or whatever it might be, everything's more expensive than it was three years ago, so that's, that's the key point.
Any questions? At while the, now I teach tax. Excuse me, is that the technical term for things we've heard of safe tax or vehicle registration, all that part of that?
No, uh, this, this is totally separate, it would stand on its own and would be income tax only.
For both of those.
Yes.
Right now, that's the discussion is the replace what you might lose in property tax with a local income.
And this is, you have an income tax in DuBois County, right?
Yes.
So the county passed that likely, uh, through whatever means that they adopted it. I don't know which one you fell under back, back when it was adopted, but this would be completely different, it would require action. Of the city council to adopt it, it would just be a city of Jasper Incorporated area rate, it would not include the entire county, it'd be a different. Different scenario, and then the county would then have to go back and, and adopt their own, the way it stands today, now that obviously can change.
And under that proposal, every incorporated community would have to adopt their, adopt their own.
There's a, currently, there's a, uh, population threshold in the bill, so anybody over thirty-five hundred, which obviously you would fall into that category. So the smaller communities around English or wherever would, would still be under the county, the county rate and receive their distribution is probably the same way they are today.
Can you address some of the issues with, um, a local income tax as opposed to property tax, like I've heard that it's not as stable. Um, affects lower income people who are.
Yeah, there are a lot of different things, so if you're using, right now, property tax is obviously paid by property owners, right? That's pretty self-explanatory. We've moved more towards an income tax system, everybody's paying, uh, for those services, so there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, folks that are in apartment buildings, for instance. Uh, would the owner of the, the apartment building pass along the property tax savings in exchange for the increase in the, the income tax? And, you know, those are all local questions, I see some of you kind of chuckling, but, um. That would be one element, the other element, just income tax in general is complicated in Indiana, of course, it's finance. You do not get your income tax distributions until about eighteen months after they're collected from the consumer, uh, or from the worker in this case. So that requires a, a lot different financial planning, modeling, uh, you'd probably have to bring in additional experts to help in that process. Um, and it is, like you mentioned, very tied to the economy, so you have a lot more, it's not this. Smooth line that you see with property taxes, you see a lot of ups and downs with income tax.
I think we probably all could agree that, you know, we would like to see our, our constituents receive some relief, what do you think the answer is?
I don't have an answer, so to speak, yet, I think we are looking at a variety of different things, there are. Buckets of money at the state level that you may not even know that you own, you know, every community, every county has an income tax account at the state level. That's kept in reserve for trying to balance out those ups and downs that I just talked about, perhaps there's opportunity there. That is our money, your money, uh, the city's money. Uh, but maybe there's some opportunities there since it hasn't been realized yet to use that to reduce the income taxes and provide some credits on property tax bills going forward. Uh, and then not necessarily dive into the deep property tax cuts we're talking about today. That's a possibility we'll be talking about with legislators as we go forward, for sure.
That's important, uh, just let me try to present, if you work in, in Jasper area, but live outside the area, you're still on that, right?
The way it's being discussed now, this would change that model and it would require, uh, the tax to be, to go to where you work. Oh wait, did I get that backwards?
That's, I think it's backwards.
It's where you live now, but I think it changes the new, again, nothing's set in stone, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure it changes it to where you work.
So it could be wrong about that, you work in Jasper.
Don't take me for granted on that, or don't take me for sure on that one, I need to go back and look at the bill, and it'll change again. Uh, so I wouldn't worry too much about that right now. Current income taxes, tax is collected where you live.
Because of the many changes, and this is an everyday changing mechanism that's going on at the state level. Wouldn't we be better off just contacting our own state legislators and having some serious discussions with them directly? Um, expressing concerns either individually or as a group and, or maybe even meeting with them, I mean, they're often, um, through the chamber. I mentioned earlier, we have some legislative breakfast type things going on, and I think that a one-on-one direct would have much more impact than it would passing some kind of a resolution. Uh, that's just my feelings on that.
Yeah, I think I would, in an ideal world, I'd like to see both happen, uh, the direct communication is always best. Um, you know, like I mentioned earlier, the, the intent behind the resolutions, we, we use this strategy. Few years back when business personal property was being discussed. And the, the gener- the interest it generated in the, in the public and the local news media really helped the effort in terms of educating legislators on how and why. Property taxes are necessary and where they go, so that's, it's, it's a part of the campaign or part of the process, always direct communication is best.
And there is the silver bullet, so lit isn't the silver bullet, save all these taxes.
Yeah, I mean, nobody wants to, yeah, so, no, there's no silver bullet.
I'd like to know more a little bit about those pots of money sitting up in the state.
It's your money and it comes to you eventually, but we were just, we would expedite it and lower the threshold. Ask that if they lower the threshold, this retained back in the reserve account.
And obviously another issue with lit tax will affect your stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the legislation will affect your Jasper rules and affect DuBois County and city, you're not.
Library township, sure, yeah.
So the thing that worries people the most is all the uncertainty. How to commit and how are we going to take care of the people in our community or schools?
I was, uh, with the city the, a couple nights ago and they, on the spot, passed the spending freeze. Um, not suggesting that for you all, but you're right, there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of fear about what's next and what you can obligate yourself to, for sure.
Yeah, I printed off a couple of articles too, and it does go with, say that many communities are looking at power infreeze, spending freezes, just because, you know, we don't know what the future holds.
Yep.
So maybe when we're looking at the budget this year, we ought to be looking also, and as the mayor suggested last year. A flat line, but that didn't happen, but maybe we have to look a little bit closer at that this.
Well, we'll know by the time budget season rolls around where the, the legislation stands, we'll be able to get you updated by then, but no, you're right, it's the, I couldn't agree more, it's scary.
How soon will you have it, will we have idea?
Now, the session ends on late April, in late, late April, and I suspect that this bill or this. And idea, concept and the budget bill will be the last two things decided. So somewhere around midnight of the last night in general, something like.
And the current shortfall production, the latest that you, you had put out was how much for Jasper?
Um, I had, I think it was for, um. Income tax, our property tax revenue alone, um, was actually seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars on, over the next three years.
Total or per year?
And it was two seventy-seven for twenty twenty-six, five forty-six for twenty.
So that's a cumulative number.
It is cumulative number.
That's just so, so, that's not even hard to.
And then there, um, the Legislative Services Administration had it, our agency had a, um. A loss on our tip as well, but I couldn't quite figure out how, how they calculated that, because it only had one ten, that we have several tips. Um, but it had a loss of forty-five thousand dollars in twenty-six, eighty-two thousand.
So that is the updated, would you get that off the list serve?
Um, I know, I have a bigger telling.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure it's the updated.
It's the newest.
That's cool, yeah, perfect.
But nothing will be.
No, no, we're still a couple of months away from that.
Property tax, the two hundred seventy-seven thousand, thirteen twenty-six, and that doesn't include the business property tax.
You know, there's the philosophy, I can't argue with the philosophy on the property tax and then. Putting more responsibility at the local level, the decision-making on what we want to invest in, you know. But that means global income tax, it means public safety tax, it means the, will be a nice standard. Those, those become real tools for us that we don't utilize today. It has become very familiar with them. It's just a big change, and, and getting through this chain, we'll get through it. Fair enough, we have to get through it. But it's, there's so many moving parts right now, it's so dynamic, it's, it's really hard to tell. If we don't. Lobbying for what we do as a municipality, its services to our public. There's some services we may not be able to.
But I think it's important.
Pressure.
Yep.
Because they went before it. That didn't make it any cheaper for the residents, they, they had to go ahead and contract it out.
You're not going to stop providing police and fire, that's been a big.
Right.
Complaint back to us that we're, you know, cities are saying they're going to not have police and fire departments, of course you're going to have police and fire, it's a core service. But will you have fully staffed trucks, will you be able to be, you know, backfill positions that. That term out or whatever the case may be, those are the kinds of things, are you mowing your parks every three weeks instead of every week and a half? Going forward, what impact does that have? Those are the kinds of things that I think legislators really need to hear, uh, from you all, the, the real world cuts that might be coming. And how it impacts, you know, everyday life.
And I think in some scenarios I see, depending on the value of your home, and if you're at your, uh, property tax cap or not, you could essentially end up paying more. And then if you shift the earth to an income tax, you're going to pay even more, but you're not actually saving your constituents' money.
Yeah, I've, I've urged our members to be careful, you're right. With that line of lobbying, because legislators might say, whoa, whoa, hold on, go back and fix that. Um, but yes, you're right, i- it's going to vary wildly between community and what your individual tax makeup is. Uh, how many of your properties are at the cap, what class of properties are at the cap, is it all your two percent properties, is it all your three percent properties? All your homeowners, whatever it might be, and it's just going to vary wildly until we have a final bill, you'll not know the real impact. Till you do a parcel-by-parcel analysis, so it's intense.
I have a question on the lit, if, uh, if something would go through like that, and we're already getting a portion of the county's lit. But we would be expected to pass our home or suggested, would we also continue to get a portion of the county lit?
No.
So that part would go away.
Yep.
What about the motor vehicle tax?
That's independent.
So if we pass it.
Wait, what do you mean motor vehicle, wheel tax?
You would get that about.
Yeah, um. Yes, but that is still in flux, as a matter of fact, on the way down here today, the, the coupling of the wheel tax to the community crossings grant was changed. Um, they still want you to pass it, but you would still be eligible to apply for part of the community crossings if you don't have a wheel tax. At least that's the, what happened today.
If the county has a wheel tax, we would still need to implement.
Yes.
Impossible wheel tax.
To get the full amount, yes.
That would get my next follow-up question on that, thought it was crazy when I read that somewhere in the, to be the capital brand or something that they're going to tie to me to go on, it's back to.
You're not crazy, they definitely, that was in, in the bill until today, and now it's still in the bill, but changed a little bit, I haven't. It may have changed more since I got out of the car, I was listening to the, you know.
Well, we all know, you, you, I said, we have a community crossing grant, it's a great program.
The first checks I ever saw given out were in this very room.
We, we tried to leverage it here, it's, it's good, it's good.
How's this compared to what other states?
Great question, so, uh, the Tax Foundation, which the legislature often refers to as for rankings of tax status around the country. Uh, Indiana is ranked fifth for the best property tax environment in the country, so there are only four states ahead of us. Um, when I talk to my colleague, that's our current system.
Okay.
Um. When I talk to my colleagues around the country and explain the cap system that we already have in place, it's the most aggressive cap on residential property probably in the country already. Um, you know, what has happened the last few years is, I think, most fiscal people would tell you is an anomaly. Uh, you saw this accelerated inflation, accelerated increase in home values. So the values go up, that gives you more room under the cap, but even if your rate stays the same or goes down, you're still. Probably collecting more property tax revenue than you were the year before, the year before that. And folks are seeing an increase in their property tax bill, so that's, that's where it happened, I don't think the system contemplated. Double-digit, you know, inflationary increases in home values, which we all like, as homeowners probably, but. Provides a challenge when you're, when you're paying the, paying the bill.
But can you sell your house for that amount?
That's, you know, most people probably wouldn't sell their house even today for what it's assessed, uh, would be my guess.
Well, again, the level of services that are provided here, if you actually sit down and have a frank, honest conversation with people that are not from our, our, Jasper, DuBois County. Even though we think our tax rates are higher, they are.
The years I've been doing this, I've always been amazed at the ability of municipal officials, council mayors, court treasurers, whoever it might be to. There's an increase in fees to be able to explain it, it, it's rarely caused a major problem locally. I think you all have that ability to really do a good job of that, so I know it's not easy, but. Something that typically works out okay.
But I think that was probably people's biggest concern over the past couple of years, when those property tax bills came, it's like, wow, that's, they really went.
It's also the only tax we write a check for twice a year, if, if you don't have it rolled into your mortgage, um. And so it's more noticeable, it gets a lot more attention in that respect.
It went up this last year more than any other year since I've been paying the taxes and, and I.
Me too.
Everybody just received a lot of feedback, uh, at the amount of the increase.
Yeah.
We're with you, but different communities are different, so I've done it that I traveled to.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's part of the issue, there's some inconsistency in assessments in general, which is another issue.
And it's, you also have to remember, it's not just the city, it's all the other governmental units in the county too that play into the, the overall rate, right? So did your school do a new construction, is there some capital investment that happened? You know, did the township fire department have new trucks or what, you know, it could have been empty mining things. Uh, so that's, that's a part of it.
Their mortgage, those, their deduction.
Right, such a complicated, there's so many different tentacles to it, that it's. Stay tuned, we'll be in touch.
Gentlemen, we appreciate you taking the time, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your good. So the agenda this evening, we have resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one, which is a resolution opposing Indiana Senate Bill One. And other legislation impacting local government finances, public services. Where is your plan at, you know, why they're asking cities and towns to support this? Open it up to city councils, to what direction you'd like to take on this. One, you can ask the resolution. Tonight or to a table then, through the discussion, and we'll get back at another time.
Or it did not be passed off, was it?
Or it did not be passed away?
There, I think the field's certainly. I don't know, we have enough information to, to move forward with this, this kind of.
I believe it's changing, state legislature will consider it a difference. I'd prefer to all reach out to our state legislators and really let them know these numbers, I mean, if you. Kirsten has them, I have a report that has those same numbers in them. It could be very devastating in our community, and there's no doubt, but we don't know how it's going to pan out at the end of the day.
It is really important to communicate to our representatives, senators. About the impacts that will be here in Jasper, we have to find what our impact necessarily will be financially. We have to decide where it's going to come from. Kind of services.
There has to be a loss in service in some. Can't, you can't reduce your your budget and then say we're promising everybody the same thing.
Yes, unless you make it up to these other three tools we've talked about.
But those are going to be moving, who knows what that's going to.
And there will be a negative impact on those. We'll see if the officials decide. Uh what, you know, I think it's 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 stirring the mind quite a bit. Thanks for doing funding for municipalities to come.
Yeah, I can't imagine the cabinet would be very happy with the Peter, we have to break away from the cabinet's thoughts. We're watching, local option contact to do our own LIT, that's going to be the next show, they're going to be there as well. Place exactly what we have today. Or have to increase it.
Oh, how would that take out of the county's budget if we pass our?
If he passes, if they pass the law, then we have to do the LIT taxes and so we cut that out of the cabinet option.
And be like, throw your tiff onto our income.
That's exactly what it would be like.
And that's a pretty decent sized company. Whenever a bunch of meetings, like, and they said. Said where he lived, where he worked, it creates a topic then.
Sure.
We've been sure, it was really a bad county level.
Well, then it would impact all the five counties surrounding us, that all the people that are driving in here and going to work here. They collected all their tax dollars and and maybe without.
And so I think that's just, that's the purpose of the resolution, is to identify that then. This is going to cause so much uncertainty. Um you know, and then what you're asking, the purpose behind passing the resolution is just that, to make. Allow the legislators to understand where, what our community position is with respect to that uncertainty. So that they take a really, really hard look at the the suggested um reductions. And what it really is going to look like to to try to find other sources. To make up those those reductions. And that doesn't sound like the the level of certainty that we currently have. But, you know, passing a resolution now is a lot different than passing a resolution in April. Because by April.
Sorry to decide so.
Probably we could wait till March to do that, where things are more certain.
Mayor, could we? Could we prepare a position letter from the city? With our numbers and everything that we could then send to our our legislature. In in that most formal way to do it, we get on the phone and call people up, I don't I don't know. That's the one.
It would open door by doing a letter.
I know, send letters to each of the.
I have two.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything.
It was always a formula that they followed, like a ladder represents ten constituents or a hundred. A phone call represents that twice that many or whatever, so I mean, that, you know, gets noticed for sure. Every little, every little bit helps, and I'll I'll contact and I'll call them, right? I think that's an important part of the process. Uh I don't have a problem. I I think March makes good sense, it's still ahead of the deadline there, but uh issue I have is the whole philosophy on 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 how we pay for things. You know, I I start with the premise that all taxes are evil, some are more evil than others, but unnecessary evil. So to me, the worst of all, any kind of taxes is, this is a personal opinion, of course, the. The income tax, because why? Well. In our nation, our economic system, the way that wealth is created, uh for the mass, for the majority of people is through earned income. The great American middle class, that's how we create wealth, is from our earned income. Well, if you're you're taxing that, you're going to get less of wealth creation, well versus. A a tax on uh property is is a tax on on wealth that's already been created. Uh I don't want to. Isn't it interesting that the president is is talking about this, this idea of having no federal income tax? And here we are, making this shift today from property to income, it's uh it's unfortunate that this is what we're looking at. I I just think it's it's awful, so so also rise, property is taxed second. As far as the evils go, only to income tax, because income is where you're going to create your wealth from. And um we we need more people creating wealth, that's that's it. Uh I I would, I would consider voting for this in March, I I don't know that I'd like to vote for it right now, there's some. Other language issues in here anyway, that I think I would tweak if we get to that point.
So let's table it uh until March.
I would like.
Do you want to propose the change?
Oh, sure.
That we are ready for the.
Sure. One of the, one of the things on the very first uh page is the. The fifth whereas down. Uh where it says. Last, they're making businesses the only recipient of the tax cuts, uh I would suggest. Replacing only with some kind of language there that says. That that the idea that they would probably be the beneficiary of uh a disproportionate amount of the tax cuts. But I don't think language like only, so so absolute language would be the proper there. And then one other suggestion, uh two more whereas is down. Which says that, and to Nat's point earlier. Uh says that the city will be forced to make significant cuts to police, fire, and road connected services. Uh you might change that to. May be forced to. I mean, that will be forced to.
Will be forced to.
We go back, oh yeah, also, some real radical might come in here and say, we're getting rid of the parks department or. Or the arts department, and we're going to fully fund the rest of this, I mean, that's uh again, absolute language, rather than will be forced. Maybe first, I think, would be the other direction I would take, the the point needs to be made, absolutely, we got, we got paid police fire. But I don't know that it's, we'll go conclusion that that's worth what cuts will come. Those are the two things I saw initially.
By the time March, some of these other numbers and some of the other whereas is could also change.
Very true. So let's, I'll I'll make a motion to table it with the amended language that uh. Chad was talking about, and and then uh we'll probably have to update the numbers and things like that once we. Learn more about the actual, as we will.
Yeah, I have a motion from Kevin. I'll snap it, second from Chad. Any further discussion?
Is it possible then for uh Kirsten to uh related work on that uh this month, and then comes to the next meeting with a. Updated. Copy of what we did.
Ten days before.
I think we actually have it prior to that, just in case those other.
Letter.
I think we need a position letter prior to the next meetings, we'll be getting on.
We could do a position letter anytime.
Your municipal dispatches, we got made two weeks ago, and everybody, every center of ways, instead of budget committees, information on there, and I think that. We need to get the position letter out.
I'd like to see it from the mayor and the council, all the signatures.
He's, we talked about that, yeah, absolutely.
All signatures on it and get it out, and so they can at least understand our position.
Well, it's kind of a resolution acceptance.
Kind of, that would be a more personal way, I think.
Yeah, well, we can do that. Awesome, okay, I think, I think that's the. Well, point is, who's individually going to give a call? And see what it takes to support our future, that collectively as councillors. Back next month. Address this resolution.
In the meantime, in the meantime, maybe we all as individual council members could reread this resolution and make it any other suggested changes.
Yes, please send any of those to me.
Eleven days. Speak to Shane, speak to there.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, none of this stops all the queues from reaching out to the legislators.
Kirsten's been giving us some financial information, as she gets it. Yeah, of course, a lot of the. The issues we talked about. incorporate that in the letter if you need. Look at Raff, don't get like Raff, they said, she's got her.
I think some of those aim emails that I sent out too have some really good talking points, or maybe even templates uh of some sort, so I can look at that.
I have motion, Kevin. Second from Chad to table until next month, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one. Real further discussion, one favor seen by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Sharing here, yeah, um next on the agenda is their regional wellness uh presentation. Alright, um. Take it off just a little bit, and then I'm going to turn it over to people who really know what's going on. This is. You know, as as you know, we've uh we've been working on our long range comprehensive plan for a number of years and executing the. Items that are in there, the priorities that are in there, I'm really. Pleased at where we are today. We've come a long way, this this uh indoor sports.
You want to hang on one second, we can put the presentation up on the screen.
Sure. I'm driving.
I'm sorry.
Because because.
Yeah.
They've got all the gravy. It's been a long time coming, we've we've worked hard. Just to get to where we are today, it was one of those things, the priority list was kicked down the road, because the. Expected cost, and uh we had a lot of priorities that we could address, you know, that were financially easier to accomplish. This is, this one is still held near and dear to the public, and as we saw that. For today. With YMCA, uh and I say partnered with YMCA in a number of ways. One, uh they are doing a significant amount of fundraising with a goal of fifteen million dollars toward this project. YMCA has, will be entering into a management agreement, where they will manage the facility and the programming within the facility. We will own and maintain the grounds of the facility. So if you took took it, I think hypothetically, we said, if you took the building, you turned it upside down, you shook it. Everything that would fall out, the YMCA will take care of it, okay? Everything that is secured as part of the infrastructure of the building is city owned. So that's a good way to look at it, the partnership. As we've, as we've gone down the path with with Mike. He's got a great reputation right now in the area with the Tri-County YMCA, and he's he's had. A desire to come to Jasper for many years, you all know this story, so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, but. But I think we've worked together pretty well, and specifically over the last year and a half. Uh where we started the fundraising and the design work, conceptual design. And we're at a place right now where I think it's just important that the the community. Knows a little bit more about this this project, so this is meant to be an informative session, there's no decisions to be made or anything, so. Well, we want to share this information today, and and I hope you feel excited about it, is what we do, we meet with uh. Potential donations, donors to the program. Almost every meeting we have, people are extremely positive about the future and what this means to the community. It means it from an economic development standpoint, recruiting talent, it means it for bringing in business. For local restaurants, for events, those kind of things, it means it for recreation facilities that people today don't have access to. Because the schools are are overbooked. And uh we just don't have the opportunities that we had even when I was in school. When I was in school, there's always a gym to get into, and uh but that's not the case in Jasper. So and DuBois County, it's 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 really a problem within the camp. With the exception of the permanent tri-county. That is, that is where people have to go, and they do, they do that on a regular basis, but I'm going to let Mike. Talk a bit about program, and then we'll we'll turn it over to Jeff Justice and some of the others, Renee and and Kirsten. Talk about the financial time, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, just want to share a quick story, I got a kick out of it today. Bunch of kids were at the Y today shooting baskets. I walked in and there was a crow book open on the floor, like. Guys, what are you doing here? And kid goes, I'm finishing my e-learning, I have to have it in by three o'clock, so. Uh as Mayor said, you know, people seek out facilities where they can come gather, so. Our project vision, expand access to physical and mental health and wellness, so. Really want to emphasize the physical and mental health part of it, you know, two of the best ways to improve your mental health. Exercise and being around others, so I think we're a great fit there. Create new program opportunities for families, seniors, and youth, so our. You know, our youngest that we have coming to the Y is six weeks old in child watch, up until. We have a ninety-seven year old that comes in and uses the pool a couple of times a week, so kind of that full range of of service. Uh people that we do, uh as Mayor said, strengthen regional economic growth by attracting and retaining workforce talent. Um my eyes have really been open in the last year of the number of people that work from home, work remotely. Uh Mayor and I have talked of, like Crane expanding thousands of jobs. Should be nice if those people live here in DuBois County somewhere and and work at Crane, so provide opportunities for that, and also. Bringing young families back, you know, I have twenty-seven year old living in Denver, I'm sure like for him to come back someday. Uh to some of the amenities that uh we may not offer. Um Mayor talked a lot about our partnership and what that's going to look like. Uh also want to emphasize that we are exploring other partner requests. Uh we want the facility at its most basic level to be used by the community, so when you see the plans. You'll see some community rooms, and you'll see a gym kind of sectioned off away from everything, the purpose of that is for organizations to come in and do. Uh blood drives for young life to come in on Monday nights, uh for people to use it for maybe a voting center. Uh people to come in and use it for family gatherings or whatever, we want that to be a vibrant, active facility. So um you know. The programming, as I mentioned, again, it's going to be for for kids all the way up to adults. Uh we do Live Strong program for cancer survivors, Rocksteady Boxing for Parkinson's patients. Uh the facility is going to contain an indoor track for walking. Um that there's not a lot of people out walking tonight. Uh but I guarantee that there'll be a lot of people in the regional wellness center walking on a night like tonight. Uh the wellness center, the gyms, the community space, uh always to bring in the community together and and serving people of all. Shapes, sizes, walks of life, and uh really focused on that family. Time together where they can come and do things as a family together, so with that, I think I'll turn it over to you, Jeff. And John, maybe, Jeff for sure.
Good evening, uh my name's Jeff Justice, I'm an architect with Hayford, and I'm here representing the design and construction team this evening. Um, behind me, Brad Eckery, um. Involved in the civil permitting process of, of the project and you'll hear from him on a parallel. Uh, situation just in a few minutes. And then also with us is the Krimp team tonight and. I promised John that I would do the presentation if he would answer all the questions. So please ask a lot of questions. Um, to just. As we get started, um, to support the vision, to support the partnership that was just described, also what is envisioned is a new facility. A new facility that would stimulate all the activities that was just described. First, the image that you see up here on the, on slot, uh, on behind you and in your packet is a kind of an overall site. Aerial view of where the project is located to get you oriented to the north is to the, to the right of the page. Um, and Jasper High School to the top to the west, the parklands to bottom to the east. And fifteenth street is running vertical on that, uh, on the south side of, of the site. It's about ten acres there. That is adjacent to the existing parklands and school. Um, it's the intent that the regional wellness center that you see there in kind of a yellowish brown. Nestle itself into the western side of that property and form an anchor. Uh, for the parklands and the development of it to certainly enhance. And complement the parklands that are there. Also, we have an opportunity as we continue to collaborate with the school corporation. For some possible, uh, uh, connections there. It's envisioned that there are two. Uh, entrances to this facility. The one on the east is a rework of the existing entrance. To, that will serve both the parklands and the regional wellness center. The entrance on the west is. Certainly needed from the size of this facility and also provides secondary. Uh, access and, and possibly a more direct connection to the high school, um, in that shared situation. Um, the, the building entrance itself is that little red arrow that you can see there. Uh, you can see that that entrance, uh, will be visible at, at the main entrance drive as, as you come in. Uh, and ultimately will be where the front door of this facility is located. You'll be able to see that. Uh, certainly from the, the Jasper Parkland Pavilion as you're there at the existing lake. Uh, and so we believe there is a, a good relationship between this project and the parklands itself. This is the first floor plan for the facility. Mike already described a, a couple of the, uh. The, the components of this, but I'll give you some highlights. That same red arrow exists in the bottom left hand corner, which is the main entrance to the facility. That gets you to a location that will and can access the wellness, wellness area in an after hours situation. So. We can extend the time in which the community has access to, uh. To physical fitness. Um, if you go to the left from that main entrance, you enter a. A two-story lobby space that has some administration. As, associated with it, whether it's check-in or membership type activities and so forth. And then, as Mike mentioned, uh, the, the child watch that they currently have would be also incorporated into. Uh, this new facility. The upper left is the space that Mike talked about. Uh, dedicated for the community. You can see some intergenerational spaces. That simply means that that's the space where the kids hang out. That's where the teens go. That's where the fun happens. That's where, um, they have the social time, games. Uh, computers, all of those types of things. The community multipurpose room is a space that is. Basically programmed, uh, for all kinds of, uh, either camp spaces or after school spaces, those types of a- activities. There is a teaching kitchen, a community kitchen that is focused on nutrition and, uh, basically. How do we help our community understand cooking techniques that are, uh. I guess better. I'm struggling with this, but you get my idea. Yeah, there you go. There you go. And also that space can be used for concession type of activity if the facility needs it. And it will certainly be used by the staff for lounge type spaces, yeah, when it's not, not in program use. You see the large four gyms, spaces that Mike referenced. The one on the left is the one that is separated acoustically from the other three gyms. And has the opportunity for some more flexible programming in it. The other three gyms are all combined into one volume and has. All the activities that you can imagine in there, whether it's basketball, volleyball, um. Uh, dipper ball. And in addition to that, possibly some other. Uh, court type spaces that we're still exploring. We're very early in, in that final design process. The, the blue area itself is aquatics. There's lockers, uh, and. A compact pool, but it's a, it's a mighty pool because it has. Multiple types of spaces and, and activities, whether it's from toddlers and zero depth entries. Swimming lesson area, you can see indication of basketball. There is places for water aerobics. There, and there's multiple places to give lessons, uh, for individuals who are at different levels of learning to swim. And as you can see, there are four lap swimming lanes for, uh, that type of activity. So. Back to the wellness, that's about seven thousand square feet of wellness equipment and, and programming in, in that green area. Go to the second floor. You can begin to see at the top of the stair, there's elevator landing area and enlarged. Uh, com- common area corridor that's spined upstairs separates the elevated track area. Um, and we're still looking at the, the length of that track, uh, whether we ultimately. Put the track around all four gymnasiums and have some acoustic separation or whether it looks at, at maybe just the three. Or maybe if cost allows, we can, uh, uh, put in that intersection there to allow that track to be used even when it's, uh. Divided from, from the auxiliary gym, just for your knowledge, uh, thing. The track goes around all four gyms. It's about seven laps for a mile. If it goes in the three, it's about nine laps for, for a mile. The last slide I'd like to show you is just the, the image of, of where we are now. Um, ultimately it is our goal and hopefully you can see that we're very cognizant of the pavilion. And the type of character that exists in the parklands and this building is intended, as I said, to, to relate to that and anchor. The west side of the parklands. You can see the main entrance there. The one-story space at the far left is where the community spaces are. The two-story lobby space is there in the middle, just to the left of the, of the main entrance. And you can see. To the right of the main entrance, there's that two-story space, the wellness area is on the first floor and the studios are on the upper level. And then around the corner to the right is where the aquatic center projects toward, toward the parklands. Um, we're currently looking at, uh, some masonry, some metal panels and, uh, some glazing systems to make up the exterior. Of the facility. Um, but thankful to have Krimp Construction as part of this so that the design. And the construction and the maintainability, the sustainability, all of those types of things can be. Melted together as the design evolves rather than. Uh, pricing or designing the building, pricing the building, designing the building, pricing the building as we try to. But we're doing that all together at the same time and, uh. It's a great partnership that, that I think the entire design team and construction team is enjoying. That's quickly where we are from a design standpoint, um, and hopefully gives you an overview of, of what we've been working.
Me?
Yeah, take a shift.
I came to work here in October of twenty twenty two and I think, um, the first day that I met with the mayor, he said, how do you feel about a regional wellness center? We need a regional, regional wellness center. So. Ever since then, I have been, um, watching him and Renee work together with Jeff and, um, develop some preliminary. Uh, designs and settle on, um, a price tag not to, not to exceed forty five million dollars. Um, simultaneously during that time, we were working to put some steps in place to secure some funding. We, um. Lobbied, uh, for food and beverage tax that was one percent and began, um, collecting money in that, um, fund in twenty twenty four. Additionally, Josh worked really hard to help secure the ready two point oh grant, um, of five million dollars and, um. Mayor and Mike and the YMCA team have been, um, out there securing, um. Well, so far thirteen point one million dollars in donation funds. So, um, with a goal of reaching fifteen or hopefully even more than that. Um, we took those, uh, funds and put them into, um, a plan. We worked with Baker Tilly. And they helped us develop a roadmap of using that money, um, and, and reaching the forty five up to not to exceed forty five million dollar goal. So. Um, as it stands today, we will use, uh, five point eight million dollars in initial cash contributions, which includes funds that we have identified. At the city, our existing food and beverage tax, um, some edit funds, uh, county contribution. We will use, um, the ready grant then to make a ten million dollar cash contribution. Um, we'll look at using. Uh, bond anticipation notes to help bridge the gap between, um, when we have the YMCA donations in place to. To when we actually, um, finish the bonding process and then the city will, will look at issuing bonds at that point. Uh, we have identified using the food and beverage tax, edit funds and central tip funds as a means to make the payment then on our bonds. Uh, once the, all the financing is complete. And there's two point five eight million, um, of edit funds and there is a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, I believe cash contribution from. The county, um, there's the existing, um, food and beverage tax. And then I believe there is a, a TIF. Um, contribution as well from the central TIF. Um, I can say to date, uh, we finally. Got a full year worth of collection from the food and beverage tax and we ended our first year with five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Um, and Baker Tilly had, had used in their roadmap, um, to make the payments, the four hundred and ninety five thousand dollar estimated yearly, um. Yearly accrual of that money.
And we started off slow and.
We did. I think so.
We also had conversations during this.
And, and to that point, you feel all right. These numbers are fluid and we will continue to look at them. And I have been working closely with, um, Matt and Kyle. Um, about how SB one will affect our budget and how we will, um. How it could affect our ability to bond or what have you. And they, um, feel confident. And as, um, Matt mentioned earlier, Grellor, that. We should have some idea early April of how that will affect us. And then Baker Tilly will re- revise our plan and make sure that it is something that we can still go forward with.
Great. I get to do the least fun slides. They're not very exciting. Kirsten said that she, um, started, we, working on this at, in twenty twenty two when she came on board. And I thought, wow, we've been working on this a lot longer.
Longer, I'm sure, but.
Back maybe in twenty eighteen, um, started and, and I have to give credit to Hayford. They've been with us every step of the way. Um, it couldn't be where we are without them. But, um, so this is just a, a really kind of condensed timeline of things that we've done and, and where we're going. Um, but I thought it was important because we've done quite a few I, uh, of these items. But the real, um, kind of putting their rubber to the road is gonna start occurring here in March of twenty twenty five. And that is when, um, we are going to begin having formal meeting, a formal approval processes. Um, to go forward with the, uh, bonds and the bond anticipation notes. So, um. We've completed, I, 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 I jumped ahead of myself, but back several years ago. We passed the BOT statute, um, uh, we approved the use of that and, and that. We just can't underestimate the importance of that because that has allowed us. To put together this fabulous design team with Hayford and Krimp and, um. We believe very strongly that with that team put together and being able to work through this design process. Together, we are definitely gonna have a better project. Um, for the least amount of money that we can, that, um, it's gonna be the most efficient way. To design this project. So, um, that was a very important step. Uh, after that, we've done quite a few things. Again, we've, um, we, we did go out for offers, uh, for. Um, design developers and, um, that's, as you well know, we settled on, um, negotiations with Krimp and we are in that process. You see, we're underway in the scoping period. And working very closely again with Krimp to reach a growth guaranteed maximum price. So that we know exactly what the cost of the project will be before we ever start the project. Um, so now we are in the phase one, March, the kind of January. Uh, through March, we're in the design development and cost budgeting. We did just get our first, um. Cost estimates from Krimp and we are within the project budget under our not to exceed amount. So we're very happy, uh, where that is. Um, we're beginning phase one, which is the BOT, the kind of preliminary BOT agreement that will come sometime in March or April. And that will be with respect to the site work. Phase one is simply about getting the site ready for construction. Once, and, and hopefully we can get that underway in April, but, um. If not, the, the final or the deadline for us internally is the middle of May to get that phase one underway. Then if you want to go to the next slide. So these are kind of the formal steps that we have coming up. As I said, we're going to start in March. With the redevelopment commission. This is all statutorily required process for approval of bonds. And, um, so we'll go to the redevelopment commission where they will hold a public hearing on, um, it says on the lease and lease rentals. Again, this process is gonna be very similar to what we followed in the, um. Cultural Center as well as the outdoor swimming pool. We are going through a bonding process, but on paper, it's called a lease and we go through that leasing process. So. Goes to the redevelopment commission first and then you can see the same month, it will go to the redevelopment authority. Um, and then finally it will come to the city council in the March eighteenth meeting, uh, for approval of that lease agreement. Um, then we will go through April and ha- finally have closing on the bond, the bands. On May fifteenth. But I do want to point out that in order to close on the bands, which are those bond anticipation notes that Kirsten spoke of. Um, that process involves in approval of the bonds as well. So when you see the documents, you're gonna see the numbers that reflect the total. Um, the maximum not to exceed amount. That doesn't mean we're approving that amount, but we all know that there has to be. A maximum not to exceed in those documents. So, um, don't be alarmed when you see those numbers. That's the same that we did for the outdoor swimming pool and, uh, what we did for the cultural center. And then, uh.
Right, yeah, Kirsten's presentation, there was any no figures.
Kristen's presentation, there was no figures, no dollar amounts under the bonds. Do we know what the anticipated bond anticipation number could be, or when will we know that?
I think we had identified on the bond anticipation note for fifteen million, which represents the donor funds.
Actually, I think the bond anticipation notes are only for um approximately, um eleven million.
Oh, I looked at that number.
Um, and then I think we're looking around twenty nine million for, or is it? No, I'm sorry. It's eighteen million for the um for the bonds. The ten million dollars would be the cash contribution um for the total of the twenty nine. So, we're currently looking at eighteen million dollar bond. Um again, that that number, may fluctuate a little bit depending on capitalized interest, um depending on how much the YMCA actually rate YMCA actually raises, um and so forth. So we have a about a ten million dollar cash contribution, um, eleven million dollar bond in bond anticipation notes and eighteen million dollars in bonds themselves. Sorry.
We will um, we will include the maximum not to exceed numbers in these initial, um, these initial resolutions and documents that you'll see in the March meetings. And then um, are there any other questions?
Yes. All the the modeling for finance. Has been to this point based upon the set rules that everybody understood. And now with everything in flux potentially, um perhaps a whole new tax rate coming in. And our anticipated revenue loss as a result. This timeline seems a little aggressive with that as backdrop. So we're gonna be voting, as if nothing's changed come March, we're gonna vote to proceed. And currently, that's the design laid out. So yes.
You will be. Voting on those numbers, you are correct. But at the end of the day, um, we won't be going anywhere without approving the agreements with the contractor. So um, we will definitely, we will not, be moving forward with that part of the project until we know more, and you'll see that that is at the end of April. We do need to have those approvals in place in order to go forward with the contract with the contractor. So.
So in March, if we vote to approve, we can continue our process, but we've not yet obligated ourselves to that.
Exactly. Any other questions? And then uh once, let's just assume that everything goes forward at that time. Um during the summer, this summer, we'll be working on, uh phase two, which is the final construction documents for the building itself. And um, the, at the end of the summer, the goal is to have that guaranteed maximum price on the project, to enter the agreement with the um, the developer and to close on the bonds for the the project in general. And then in September to can commence construction.
There will be a rating.
Call before then. In advance, but not far in advance.
It just figured out to our satisfaction. We're left to figure out new means to raise revenues. Is there within our option? Um, we have, we've talked about in the past, the possibility of phased approaches. You know, is is that in the working group as we look at those kind of designs?
What we discovered in all of our wants.
I I don't know. This this is kind of a backwards way of answering what I think is your concern. Um, I I don't know that we've actually got a plan in place that would involve us phasing the construction. I I I don't think that's with the current footprint, that's not um something that, we would have to, I think, rethink things. But what we did do from a funding perspective, is ensure that we are not using the sum total, or even close to the total of all those buckets of funds that you saw on Kirsten's slide. So we are using edit funds, but we are not using anywhere close to all of the edit funds that are available in any given year. In fact, once the um the bond payments are completed for the cultural center, those are the funds that are gonna be used for this project. And similarly with the TIF funds, we aren't using near all of those funds. And once the swimming pool bonds are paid off, then we will be using the swimming pool bond payment funds, to go toward this project. So we expect for those funds, the the central area TIF fund, and the edit funds to continue to accumulate while this is being paid. Uh, and we felt pretty comfortable with that. And um I don't know, I think all of you know Baker Tilly there. They take a pretty conservative approach to any kind of project that they've ever helped us with. And so um, they've given us their advice on on what we can use and what we can afford from those buckets of money. And.
Just to backtrack on what Renee said about using um not using all of our edit funds, even with, um this payment in place and the contribution of edit funds towards, the regional wellness center. Um the mayor still has a a five-year plan of using edit funds. Um and it those include, contributions to public safety, fire department, police department, um road construction, um, storm sewer, sidewalk development, those things.
Well, and the other thing that I um researched, and I think I believe I have the answer. Um, food and beverage tax. So as you heard, we exceeded the expectations that we included in our um, in our funding roadmap. And so um our our, the Indiana code, that sets up that food and beverage tax for us or allows us to impose that food and beverage tax, allows us to use those funds for, operation and maintenance of that building. So we believe that we can take that excess, and put that into a reserve account so that that's building up and is available uh, for us to use for operation and maintenance in the future, should that be needed.
And then um after this project wouldn't be paid for, we would still be collecting the food and beverage tax, which then could be toward.
Twenty forty five. That is.
To support this project as a maintenance.
Well, I don't know what things will be like in twenty forty five, but at this point in time, the way it's been working is that it's been identified for a project. And um, that's how ours is as well. But for that project, pretty much anything related to it.
I think we can only build what we can afford, see what we have to cut something, we have to cut something. Whether it's in the design or something, and still we have to have. I mean, it's a million dollar question. Yes.
Well, because originally, really, we were told that it would probably count nowhere near forty five million. Now it's forty four million, one hundred twenty one thousand, five hundred ninety five. So that's pretty close.
Yeah, uh and I do wanna say again, that not unlike Baker Tilly, that number is pretty conservative. So i- in that, we've built in a lot into that number. So we have uh, construction contingency and owner's contingency. Um every, everything that we've spent to date, plus everything that we contemplate could be spent in the future is included in that number. So we do definitely expect that.
So that includes the money that we have spent to date, which is approximately four hundred thousand dollars. And that also includes that eight hundred thousand dollar contract, design contract that we approved at the end of the year. Um, I mean, it's all in. Yeah, it's in that money.
Cause normally, our project's soft costs are not included. And then all of a sudden, you have to furnish the building and whatever.
It's all included.
Including all of our professional service fees, everything. There's no sliding.
I I like the, you know, conservative approach, the estimates. Um, that's the way to be. So you weather the storm a little better whenever things change, but when they when they when they change drastically, that's, that's all of a story. Like so, just a case point with Baker Tilly, he was the four percent. I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna mislabel the term, the 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 maximum level increase.
The growth portion? Maximum growth portion?
It's four percent, and they use that for the fourth range TIF model. Um, and now we're hearing about a zero percent. And then a one and a two, that's that's radically, radically different than the current standard. So, we gotta be prepared for that kind of stuff too. And then if if indeed it impedes our ability, uh the TIF revenue to to pay off the current pool, is that something I understood was a possibility?
If if our, if our tips are affected by property tax revenue and we don't generate um the amount of money that we, had hoped or had projected um over the course of the years, then that would, you know, affect our ability. But I don't, it doesn't appear to, go down that low in the in the model.
Keep in mind that every time we bond, we have to have a coverage, uh and access coverage built in. So to take into account those kinds of unforeseen circumstances. And that coverage number is like, twenty five to forty, anywhere from twenty five to forty percent times. So it it's a pretty healthy coverage amount.
And the one thing I never want to distract of whose side of this is the fact that we're talking about the property tax fact. It's like uh having a cosigner and potentially maybe called upon someday, maybe that bill. So that's pretty important. We'll start looking at radical rule changes here. So those are the things that back by.
Don't worry, those things are in mind with us as well.
And we do have to meet um those uh standards that Baker Tilly had talked about in the presentation, um those tests.
Reasonable.
Reasonable expectation tests. Um, so we wouldn't even be able to bond if we couldn't meet those tests.
Kirsten, you have any idea like the maintenance costs and stuff like that? What kind of money we're gonna generate?
Um, we are still working on um, on between the YMCA and the city, what, who's responsible for what? Um, are you asking what?
Though more the maintenance, we've covered uh.
So kind of the mayor had talked about that before, like if you take the building and shake it, so whatever's part of the building would be the cities. Um, and the other amenities that would fall out would belong to the YMCA. And then we'll have, we'll have insurance costs. And um I know that Tom has um, planned for, you know, um outside maintenance, mowing, landscaping and things like that.
The other thing in this uh based on liner, but uh you you mentioned a lot of the soft costs for, you know, we have figured into it like the the gym equipment and everything. Why that's all included in the budget, right? That's.
That's the FFNE, and um and that's part of the money that the YMCA is raising, I think comes out of those.
All right, we're getting long-winded. I'll sit down and let Mike grab that.
I appreciate the uh questions and the concerns. It's this a big project with things changing out there. Obviously, we've gotta keep our eye on, where the parents going.
I I just have another question, kind of based off what Phil says. But then who pays the utilities, the water bill and all those kind of things?
Well, I just wanna, you know, thank the city team. It's been a long journey. Mayor kind of referenced our phases of talking and dating on going back. We've been together too long, but uh big thanks to the city team. Also, early in this process, we formed a, capital development task force, which a couple of members are in the room here, who have really challenged us along the way and helped keep us on track. Um, I don't think we swerved far, far off the track. I also wanna thank our donors, over thirteen million dollars pledged. It's a pretty significant number. And if you think of some of those pledges came in May of twenty twenty three, when we were looking at National Guard Armory, didn't, we had a vision, we had a a sketch, but not much more than that. So really, a big thanks to those who have supported the project to date. Um, I wouldn't be a good fundraiser, and I saw Kevin chuckling already, if I didn't include a pledge form on the back of my presentation. But, we do have, we do have some work to do. And you know, as Chad brought up, concerns about costs and a way that we can, help mitigate that is through our fundraising efforts. Um, we feel like, each step along the way that brings the project more into focus, more into reality, is a bigger incentive for people to help be a part of that. So um, if you know of people who are interested in, you know, hopefully the uh word is out in the community and uh, you know, whether that's a thousand dollar donor or a five hundred thousand dollar donor, we, love to talk to them and um love to have them support this project that we think is gonna be around for, under plus years. So uh for our kids, grandkids and great-grandkids. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you all for the presentation. Think the commitment early on was we'll build, we'll be comfortable to build. And so we've gotten that back. Next thing on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two, ordinance to rezonate certain properties within jurisdiction limits, the Jasper Advisory Plan Commission.
I'd like to make a motion uh that we read the first reading.
City, can we please read new ordinance?
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one. Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two, an ordinance to rezone certain property within the jurisdictional limits of, the Jasper Advisory Plan Commission.
Second from Chad. Any further discussion of this?
This came before the plan commission. Um, that's all. There we see the available recommendation. This transfers the property that we used. On two zone into a conservation park, which blends in with the park density experience. Um, so just ties up, ties that back together. Um, we did have conversations again, planning sessions with the. Um, we did have conversations again in planning sessions uh with the Department of Natural Resources. Uh, on there, we do approach just a little bit of the property, a little bit inside. Here it is. I think it's very exciting to see. That project helped me get more people out about moving around in nature as well. So. That's what we said.
Yeah, Bush, John, second from Chad. Any other questions? All in favor, so missing a high.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Well, we're. Moving on, I just want to let you know, it gets confusing. Rezone ordinance is only sit for one reading. So if you're wondering why this is not going to come back for a second, everything gets attached totally. They only have one reading.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one, and we're establishing rules and regulations to adopt. The given ordinances and resolutions. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the second reading? In full, by title.
I'm going to motion to read um, second reading by title only.
I'm pushing Nancy. Second full. They're missing a high.
Hi.
The rules. We say attorney, please read the ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash one, by title.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption amendment or repeal. An ordinance and resolutions.
Then we'll both approve the ordinance in the second reading. Wish all, I'll say. Second events. Further discussion. So missing a high.
Hi.
Any opposed? I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one for the third and final reading, but I'm. I'm pushing all to read by title only. Second, second events. All in favor, so missing a high.
Hi.
Any opposed? City Attorney, please read ordinance for twenty twenty-five dash one by time.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption amendment or repeal of ordinances and resolutions.
I'm going to approve the ordinance third and final reading.
I still move.
Bush, Chad.
I'll second that.
Same for Nancy. Any further discussion?
Just like to point out, I think today, side of you were leading this. Could well be our last third reading. Moment to, a little emotional here.
Eliminating ways. All right, go for the discussion. All in favor, so missing a high.
Hi.
Any opposed? Starting on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash three. Then I'm mostly reading the ordinance, the first reading in full. I'm going to read by title. I'm pushing John to read by title. Second. I'm missing a high. Any opposed? City Attorney, please read ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash three by title.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three, an ordinance at the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing the issuance. Of its taxable economic development revenue bonds and improving other actions in respect thereto.
Then I'm motion to approve the ordinance first reading.
I'll say.
Second. Any further discussion?
So this ordinance deals with the um. The bonds that will be sold for the um. Northridge project through the IFA program. Their under.
Low interest.
Right, right.
I'm pushing all, second Kevin, all in favor, so we're saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And. This is the gas contractor, west applications.
Um, I received two gas contractor license applications, one from Matt Pry with Bears Plumbing. And one for Justin Harper Bears Plumbing. Uh, Matt passed with an eighty-six percent and Justin passed with a ninety percent.
Any questions?
I'm taking a motion to approve the application, gas contractor's license, both Matt and Justin. So. Question, John? I'll say, second, that's any further discussion? All in favor, so we're saying hi.
Hi.
Here is the acceptance of donations.
I would like to request that the council accept donations that were made um in the month of January to the arts department totaling one hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Um. There were several restricted use donations, one in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for performances. And other activities as determined by the director and then uh three one thousand dollar. Restricted use donations to be used towards the fiftieth anniversary dinner at the. Of the arts department this year. Uh, the art board did agree to the conditions of those uh. Donations, so I really need the crisis acceptance.
I'll make a motion to um accept some of the donations.
Can Bush, Kim? I'll say, second events, further discussion. I think I'll want to thank the generous benefactors of the city of Jasper for their continued support. Pretty expect that, but it's going. I think it's important to know that there is a lot. Things to get done in the city of Jasper during donations through this planning. You know, it's. It's great because we get things done without increasing our taxes. Not the only, our presidents. It's a big part of who we are here. All right, I have a motion, Kevin, second events, all in favor, so missing a high.
Hi.
Any opposed? With that. This. Entertained motion.
I'll make that.
I'm pushing Nancy.
I'm second.
Second, all in favor, so we're saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?